Shall I accept the motion to enter an executive session for purpose number three, to discuss strategy with respect to the pending litigation listed below contingent upon a declaration by the chair that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigation position of the public body, and I so declare. The pending litigation is filed, Civil Action Number 1.23-CV-11111-IT, Liam Morrison, a minor, by and through his father and stepmother in Natsho Guardians, Christopher and Susan Morrison versus the town of Middleborough School Committee, Carolyn Lyons, Superintendent of the Middleborough Public Schools in her official capacity, and Heather Tucker, Acting Principal Nichols Middle School in her official capacity. Do I hear a second?
Second.
This requires a roll. Chris?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Yes.
And the chair also votes yes. We will return after we're done with the executive session, okay? Thank you.
I'll call the school committee meeting back into session. We were adding. Sorry for a little bit of a delay. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on something? Can you hear me now? How about now? Oh, seven.
Do you want to bring them all up for a sec?
How's that?
Nope, nothing. The main up?
How's this one?
No, I think it's the whole thing's out.
Sure. How's that? What? Oh, really? The other thing is, don't I have a little red dot usually on my microphone? Test one, two?
There's a whole lot of cables. Yeah, everything's connected.
Yeah, I don't have a red. Don't we usually have a red dot? That's why I'm asking. Oh, really? That's why I'm asking. I'll be loud. Can you guys hear me in the back if I speak like this? That work for everybody? Excellent. With that, I will move on to public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? And like I said before, you'll have three minutes. Go right ahead.
Can you hear this one?
I can hear you.
You can hear me? Oh, perfect. All right. Ashley Otway. This evening, I would like to address Chairman Young. At the last school committee meeting, Board Member Chris Benson motioned to go into an emergency executive session to have a moment for all members to discuss and be heard on the newly filed lawsuit where the committee was listed as a defendant. And your immediate answer was, I can't because it's not on the agenda. So after a little bit of research, emergency executive session does not have to be listed on the agenda. The lawsuit was filed after the deadline to publish the agenda, and there would not have been enough notice for it to have been added. Therefore, Mr. Benson's motion was absolutely allowed. Your ally, whether it be through omission or blatant, may have very well impacted, or some may say coerced, the way the rest of the committee members to vote the way they did during roll call. One member abstained from the vote because she didn't know the rules, and I feel like you should have advised her of what the rules were. The lawsuit had been looming for two weeks prior to the suit being filed, so there was ample opportunity for the school committee members to meet and with your representation to have a discussion, but it was never set up. Regardless, you don't need an attorney to be present to speak with one another in executive session. You had two board members who wanted an opportunity to be heard and to hear from the rest of the members, but you snubbed them. Do you have anything to say about your actions last week?
We don't comment on public comment.
You can, though. So you're choosing not to.
Again, public comment is for something not on the agenda, so I'm not commenting on something on the agenda.
Well, it's pretty clear that you don't hear or listen to anybody up on that stage, aside from Superintendent Lyons. I feel like your seat really just stinks of corruption, and you should be removed.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Sarah Zagoras. I don't even know if it's gonna work.
We can hear you.
So I just wanted to ask that the safety audit be discussed at the June 22nd, 2023 school committee meeting. I'm asking for it to be placed on the agenda for the June 22nd, 2023 school committee meeting. It's been a year since this was asked. This has taken far too long to have anything done. There is still one door at MKG that does not work, and when you walk by it, unlocks, so that is not safe. And we need to do better for our kids. We need to do better. It's one year since Uvalde. That's when it was brought up, and the vetting process has taken far too long. So I'm asking for that to be placed on the next agenda, June 22nd, 2023, on the school committee meeting. I also want to ask if, what consequences there are in the district for the use of the N-word, whether written or spoken, because it's happening at the Nichols Middle School, and it should not be allowed. So I would like it to be addressed as part of the bully plan, harassment plan. What is the plan for when these words, these hate words, these sexual images are being placed in bathrooms through drawings against students? That it just seems the investigation takes far too long. So I'd like to know what type of protection there is for students that are facing this type of bullying, and then sent to investigate and take pictures on their own to submit. I think it's ridiculous at this point. So I'd also like that to be addressed as part of the bully plan that's coming up. So I'd also like that to be addressed as part of the bully plan that's coming up. And I just think that, you know, if we're spending all this time, you know, just sitting here talking about these things, nothing's gonna get done. It's the end of another school year. Bully plan is now almost two years expired. And now it's every, now all, you know, the administration, everybody, it's almost summer, it's almost summer. But what happens to these kids that are going every single day to a building and being harassed, being bullied, having to report things, missing classes, or reporting things? Not feeling safe inside buildings with doors that don't lock. We need to do better. This district needs to do better, and if it takes members of the district to go into that building and help into Nichols, then that's what it takes. We've got to all step up, all do better. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Rich Oakley, 670 Clement Street. I just wanted to present kind of an alternate view from some of the stuff that I've been hearing over the past few weeks at school committee meetings. And I would like to thank the school committee and the superintendent for responding to, I guess I'll just call it the teacher incident the way that you have, and I'll say it for a reason. It's not a political, it's not an emotional thing. It's a, there are rules on books that are backed by some amount of state and federal law. And I think that in the case of legal ambiguity, then courts have to figure these things out. There's a lack of kind of precedent to, I think, settle this issue just like that. So I, I think we should all look at this, and I think we should say, this is good. It's good because there are rules on the books to protect certain people. We are protecting those people until the courts tell us that we should be doing something different, in which case I'm guessing that if the courts tell you guys to do something, you're gonna do it. So I appreciate the protection, that the stance that you all have taken and the protection that you're offering in this case, because the rules that are there are pretty clear. And so I appreciate that, and I want to thank you guys for it, because I think sometimes you only hear from, from the people that disagree with what you're doing, and I agree with what you're doing. So thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak anything not on tonight's agenda? Go right ahead.
That have been here in the district. My oldest is 15, my youngest is 11. My family has paid taxes here since 1975. My children are very different. One is straight A's and an athlete. And the other one has two diagnoses. I've done the best I can to advocate for years, since kindergarten with my son. His latest evaluation shows him about to move into sixth grade at a third grade level. Advocates, lawyers, evaluations, observations in the classroom. Little meaningful progress. How is that acceptable? I have a profession I work in, I have a standard for myself, and my industry has a standard for me. What standards are you all operating from when a student is allowed to have that much of a divide? He recognizes that he's not there with his peers in reading and writing. And you're all okay with that? I'm not. Nor will I ever be. I've gone to Desi once. I'm about to go again, but this time it's not about education, which really, this is what it should only be about, but you know what it's about now? My son, because he has these challenges, he doesn't recognize social cues. He doesn't understand when someone's making fun of him. He doesn't understand when they are being aggressive to him. Now, he's not. He, when you see him, he's a regular kid, a happy kid, curious. Mr. Jermaine knows my son, he's been in the shop, right? Is your name Jermaine? I'm sorry. Nope, you have a plan. That's what I'm borrowing, boss. My son has been in the shop. Sorry. Anyway. Regular kid with challenges. Doesn't pick up social cues, doesn't pick up on aggression, doesn't really know how to pick friends yet, okay? In the past month, in the series of 30 days, he's been cornered in a bathroom.
Ma'am, your three minutes are up. Thank you.
I'm gonna take my three minutes and pass it on.
You can't do that.
Why not?
You can't do that.
Why?
If people have three minutes to speak in public comment, that's what they have.
I can't use three minutes?
That, no. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? No, that's fine. Go right ahead.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about my recent call to action, just trying to get this community together. And I wanted to talk about a couple of things. One of the programs that I've been running since 2020, Adopt a Senior. So this is sort of just letting the community know that we started that tonight, taking the gifts, and next week on Thursday, June 1st, we'll be distributing those gifts to every single senior. And to me, that's what inclusion is. That is giving every single child an opportunity to be recognized for their hard work. And I don't have to know them, it doesn't matter. Every single student is recognized, or no students are recognized. So that's just an opportunity that the community has, that we, where we work together to just honor these kids. So I just wanted to talk about that a little bit, and I wanted to also let the community know that I've been speaking with a few other members of our community that I've known for many years, and we are going to start that conversation. So Superintendent Lyons is not willing to do it, then we're gonna do it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on public comment? Seeing no one, I will move on. It, it's not on our agenda tonight, but it was just a mistake. Did any members of the committee have anything that we should say? Jessica, go right ahead.
I just wanted to put on record how wonderful the Fine Arts Fair last Saturday was. It was just a beautiful event with students from elementary through high school. I was blown away by how, especially the elementary kids got up and played in the orchestra and band, many of them for the first time, and it was just a wonderful event. I thought it was a great way to honor the legacy of Danny Duggan. And I thought it was wonderful how students from all the different arts venues, from digital art to, you know, you can even still see some of the visual art and the film students, the theater students, the chorus, orchestra bands were represented. And it was just a truly wonderful event. And I just wanted to thank all of the, all of the fine arts teachers and the administration who helped put it together.
Thank you. Anybody else? Chris, go right ahead.
I just wanted to just mention the MKG this week did their Living Wax Museum. And it was, by all accounts, a great success. It's the first one since COVID. And the kids all learned a lot, did a great job. These types of activities really raise student engagement, so the students who might not, you know, always love reading, writing, and math, really get in and learn a lot. So the kids and all of the staff at MKG deserve kudos.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So you know, I'll turn over the superintendent's report. We have the one item from last time.
Yep. So tonight, I wanted to come back to you with some additional information about school choice. There were some questions last session about how many students are in school choice. And then we tried to also gather information about how many of those students have siblings, where, where this was the, kind of the conversation from last session. So what, what I shared with the school committee and what I'll present now is that there are currently 38 students this year in the school choice that are, that attend our district through school choice. And broken down by grade level, there are 18 students at Middleborough High School, eight at the Nichols Middle School, eight at the Henry B. Berkland, four at the Mary K. Good, and zero at the Memorial Early Childhood Center. So of those 38 students, the question becomes how many of those students have siblings? At MHS, there are five students with siblings, but only two of those siblings are not already enrolled here in the district. There are zero students at Nichols with siblings not already enrolled. There is one at HBB and one at MKG respectively with siblings. So I wanted to just present that information and then see if you had any additional questions from the last session.
Questions for the superintendent?
Do we know if the two not enrolled in the high school, they attend like the VOPAC, they would not be interested in coming to Middleborough High School?
I don't know that. I don't know. I know the students are enrolled in other schools in the case of the two at high school. I don't know if there is intent for them to come to the high school. I believe both siblings at the elementary level are right around that K, that K entry. I know at least one of them are at K entry, but again, plans unknown. We don't. Knowing the numbers for who has siblings, but not knowing what grade the siblings would be going into, it's kind of difficult to know where to put the openings. So.
Well, I would also add this. We know the high school's at capacity, right? We know the Nichols, currently we're adding a grade team, so we're currently at capacity with there. The school that we have, that most of our elementary students go to, is HBB. We're adding teacher at HBB to handle grade capacity. At the MEK, we have the highest number of kindergarten kids that we've had in the past at 250. That on top of, as was presented last time, we still have, we still have a significant amount of housing growth that continues with, we know that the, the houses will be built within this, some of the houses will be built within this year, and then we have a significant growth in that the building department said that with the apartment complex. And Alan, did you say when that comes, goes online, or how long that has to get online?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering if you knew. Yes?
How many of those high school students will be graduating this year? That are school choice?
I believe there are 18 that are graduating.
So you'll be losing 18 students, potentially gaining four more.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. I apologize. It is 18 at the high school.
Okay.
So not all 18 are graduating, but there were a healthy sum.
Yeah, I, I believe I, I remember it was a good chunk. So you'll potentially be losing seven, seven or eight students possibly, adding potentially four. So my question would be, can you take a vote tonight that you agree to in the event that you reach out to those families of four students? And you say, would you want to bring that child? And if they would, you open up a spot in that class, and that is it. And that is four kids that families get to stay together. You allow them to, to phase out, and after that, you, you're done with school choice.
I agree with that.
With the caveat of any further siblings after that point, like, that, that's the hard cut. Like, this year would, for next year would be allowing these four in, no additional siblings, and then no more school choice. I mean, obviously, vote dependent each year, but that would be my choice for that.
Sorry, can I just clarify? So you.
For all of the current enrolled students across all the buildings?
Just the four current siblings, open it up to them for next year, with the understanding with those families that, you know, they add additional members to their family after that point, it's.
Not guaranteed.
Not guaranteed, most likely not gonna happen.
So I guess my question then is, I know that we discussed last week that if we do not, we do not vote not to have, if we don't vote, school choice goes into effect June 1st, no matter what. Do we have to have the slots determined by June 1st in order to announce fully? Or do we just get to say, yeah, we're gonna do school choice, and we'll tell you our numbers later?
Submit has to be specific, so we have to know the grade level if you're gonna open any seats.
Do we have to open a hearing to have this discussion?
No, we don't need to do the hearing. We, we checked that piece. We just need to list it as a hearing, that's all.
All right, just checking.
No, no problem.
Go right ahead. Sorry, I'm trying to look something up to make sure that.
My question is.
Oh, God.
Nope. Hello?
There we go.
So my question is about school choice. If we get rid of school choice, does that mean our kids can't go to other schools?
No.
That's what I was wondering. Like, if, so if school choice, if we decide that people can't come here, but we could still go to other schools?
Yes. So school choice goes to the districts that accept school choice. So people can still, anyone from Middleboro can still go to a place that participates in school choice.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if it was like a reciprocating thing, that if, if we ended it here.
No, we don't have, there's no reciprocation. For, for a very long time, Middleboro students went to school choice to other places. It wasn't until probably 10 years that we started accepting school choice students.
All right. Thank you.
No, no problem. Thank you. Certainly.
Sorry, before we entertain, offer the motion. Can we vote tonight to, without knowing, can we vote for the four slots to be determined? And then know that phone calls have to be made to determine what those spots are? Or can we only vote specifically for school choice with the numbers in the different grades that we are going to propose?
I think if I'm correct, in the past that we have voted on school choice, not with grades, but with numbers to schools. Okay? And so if I remember correctly, obviously kindergarten's a standalone because kindergarten's in the MEK. So it's just kindergarten. Because we never allowed school choice into pre-K, because we don't, the number of Middleboro families who apply to pre-K, they all don't get in because it's a specific program. In the past, I believe we've just set up a number at the high school, we've set up a number at the, at the Nichols. And we've always just set up a number at HBB because that's been the, the area that had the least amount of students, so we've sort of moved kids to HBB if they were coming from the outside. We've sort of left MKG alone, although that was times when we weren't so lopsided. We may have added MKG at various times, but we've been lopsided in the past.
But when it, sorry, when it then goes on the application to the state, are the numbers then broken down by grade differently? So there is the allowance that between the vote and the paperwork, there can be more specificity made?
I think we can establish the numbers and they can pick the grades, if that makes sense.
We can establish numbers per school?
Per school.
And then establish the grades after?
Right.
And also, I was, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you have a question?
Yep, she can go. I'll wait.
I was just assuming that when you put the, the four students for MHS, HBB, and MKG, do we know what schools, I, I would just assume they had younger siblings that would be going to the same schools. Do we know, like, what schools the, the siblings would be going to? Like, is it the MEK or? No, like, so we have one student at MKG with a sibling. Would that student be going to MKG or the MEK? Like, the sibling?
The, it was a K sibling, so it'd be, it'd be MEK.
Okay, okay.
I don't know about the HBB sibling.
Sibling in MKG that.
Entering, we entering.
No, there's. No, there's one sibling that wanted, was entering in the first grade.
Yeah.
Was in K now, would be entering in the first grade.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I'd have to, I have to check.
I don't want us to vote to allow a spot in a school, and then it's not, well, it's not even so much giving it up. It's, I don't want to, if the, the desire is for these four families to be able to have these four other siblings get into the school, and we don't vote to put them in the right school, then they can't get school choice, even if we wanted them to. So I don't know how we can vote to do what was asked, to just allow the exception, to just approve school choice for these siblings of these students, because what we're really saying is we want to approve a slot in the grade that the sibling of an existing school choice student is going to be going into in the hopes that they want the spot, and they get preference.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. Putting it all together. Please.
So I just want to add, I don't know if this is gonna pick me up. No? Okay, so we're talking about four students. We're not talking about 17, we're not talking about 20, we're talking about four. You could have people that move out of this town and have a family of seven move in. What are you gonna say? You can't go to this school because we don't have room? No, this is four kids we're talking about. I just think this is a lot of back and forth about four kids. This is not gonna change our numbers dramatically. If people are moving in and out of Middleboro, that's gonna change it more than this. So I just think it's a lot of hullabaloo over nothing, so I just wanted to add that. Thank you. So can we vote to accept the four and then figure out what schools they go in after the fact, before June 1st?
I mean, provided you, you know, I, I, we just have to reach out and have the affirmative conversation. You know, this was theoretically collected, so now I would be able to say, "Okay, there are four slots. What grade level, which school, and are you interested?" Because I guess my first question is, let's assume you approve four, and three accept. Did, do we, are we still, well, how do you...
I think you still have to allow the four, right? Okay.
That student in, and they would, it wouldn't be so abrupt if they did have siblings. It would be an understanding that we're not gonna keep doing this every year. And we, we didn't do this last year, just to be clear, so... Teresa, you had a question?
Yeah, well, I, I guess I'm just confused as to why they weren't already reached out to. I mean, you, you had the information in front of you. Two, two people reached out to me and asked if they would be able to do this. And I asked, "Well, did you want, did you get a call?", and they said, "No." And I said, "Well, did you want to send your child?", and one said, "Yes", and one said, "No." So out of those four, I know of one that already said, "No", but I'm just confused why they reached out to me, and they could have been reached out to, and you would have had your answer tonight and had an opportunity to vote on this with very clear information in front of you, rather than have to have the back and forth. But as Ms. Zagora said, it is for students. It is an opportunity to keep families together. And the district does, in fact, take money in when a student comes in, so you're not losing out on that. And I fully understand and do support the fact that Middleboro is growing, and that we do need to get rid of school choice probably for, for everyone. But keeping families together is very important to me, and I think that it's important to do this.
Yes. Make a motion we do not allow school choice this year with the exception of the four slots to be determined by the superintendent.
Teresa, second. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
That concludes my report for this evening.
So the only other thing we had, just...
Oh, yeah, no, that's right. Sorry.
So we have to submit it is the delegate to MAS, MAS C. It's the conference that happens every year. I know I'm going. I've been the delegate before, so I'm just wondering if anyone else knows they're going and can have a conversation. Otherwise, I'll be happy to. Yeah, first, first week in November. It's the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Oh, so it's not just the one day?
No, no, it's a three day. No, I understand. Well, that's, the problem is, if you commit early, you save money and everything like that, that's all. Yeah.
I'd like to go, but I can't guarantee it at this point.
That's fine.
So I, I would make a motion that we, we appoint Mr. Young as the delegate, since he's already planning on being there.
Teresa, second. Discussion.
Get other people can still go?
Oh, yeah, no, no, everybody can go. It's just we have to, we have to establish a delegate for the vote. There's only one delegate per school that actually goes and votes, that's all.
I gotta get the work, the vacation time approved before I can say for sure.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The, the next meeting will be the 22nd. Actually, there may be an executive session next week. We'll go from there. With that, Chair, want to stand a motion to adjourn? Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.